That's okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's great to be here today and I appreciate everyone's patience. A call to our today's meeting of the Board of Supervisors for the University of Louisiana System. Carol, if you could please call the roll.
Mr. Drew Brown, Mr. Barry Busada.
Here.
Dr. Jimmy Clark.
Here.
Mr. Steve Davison.
Here.
Dr. Joe Leatherman.
Present.
Dr. John Noble.
Here.
Mr. Al Perkins. Mr. Dana Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Elizabeth Pierre.
Here.
Mr. Virgil Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Mark Romero.
Here.
Ms. Christine Russell.
Here.
Mr. Robert Saleem.
Here.
Mr. Joe Salter.
Here.
Mr. Brad Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Julie Stokes.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Carol. This morning before Mr. Salter leads us in an invocation, could we please pause for a few seconds of silence as we remember our colleague and friend Ms. Lola Dunno as well as her family? Mr. Salter, if you could please lead us in the invocation?
Dear and Father, we thank you for this opportunity we have today to visit. Lord, I thank you for each person who is here, particularly, Lord, those who are involved in carrying out the educational mission here in our state and our colleges. We pray, Lord, that you would guide and direct them. Ask, Lord, that you would help us as board members to make decisions that are in the best interest of the citizens of our state and also the students that we serve. And, Lord, we would pray this morning and thank you for the tremendous work that Lola did. Lord, we thank you so much for her dedication and for the love of higher education here in the state and particularly, Lord, that at Northwestern. We ask, Lord, that you would bless our family, continue to bless them, that you would guide and direct them, and, Lord, that you would let them know of your love. We ask, Lord, that you would, again, be with us as we go through this meeting. You'd ask that you would forgive us, Lord, for the ways we sin against you, and we thank you for your many blessings, for Christ's sake. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Salter. Before we ask our recently appointed board member to receive his oath of office, we would like to invite Mr. Edwin Dunno and his family to share a few words. Mr. Dunno, if you could?
I didn't know I was going to be asked to talk at any length, but I just tell y'all how much Lola treasured her work here, I'm sorry. And how rewarding she found it. And I think the only thing transcended that or made it more significant to her was the friendship that she developed with everybody on the board. And I'm sorry, I'm an emotional person. But she did. And if anybody doesn't have all of the past minutes or records, we have them at our house. We have, we have boxes of papers that I have no idea what to do with. And she kept everything, and we have a whole room in my office that's filled up full of it as well. But she did. She, she, she enjoyed her work. She found it important, rewarding, significant, and thoughtful of everybody here. She really did. Now, am I going to swear, Mr. Saleem, in that? I will tell y'all, when they asked me to do this, they sent me this little script. And this was the first time that I knew his name was Robert. He's always known by Skeeter. He can explain to y'all where that comes from. We've known Robert since grade school, I guess, and he's a fine man, and I know he's going to do y'all a great job, and I appreciate the opportunity to swear him in. Okay. Where do you want us to stand?
That's perfect for us.
Is this okay?
Facing each other.
Okay. Raise your right hand. I, Robert Saleem, do solemnly swear.
I, Robert Saleem, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws of this state.
And the Constitution and the laws of this state.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform.
I will faithfully discharge and perform.
All the duties that come upon me.
All the duties that come upon me.
As a member of the Board of Supervisors for the University of Louisiana System.
As a member of the Board of Supervisors for the University System.
According to the best of my ability and understanding, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So help me.
Congratulations and thank you, Mr. Dunno, for administering Skeeter's oath. And we're very pleased to have Mr. Saleem on the board. He was appointed by the governor to fill out the remaining uninspired term of Ms. Dunno, who serves as an at-large member. I do want at this moment to defer to Mr. Saleem. If you could maybe share a few words, welcome to our board.
Well, thank you. I look forward to being on the board. Quite frankly, I wish I wasn't here. Lola was a dear, dear friend, and family's a dear friend. And I look forward to serving on the board, and thank you.
Mr. America, I make one of our remiss to do my two sons here, Jason, Dunno, and Gary Dunno, our daughter lives in Waco, she wasn't able to make it. But again, on all our matters, we thank y'all for your friendship and for the resolution that y'all got.
Thank you. And, you know, at this time, in consideration of Ms. Dunno's contributions to our board, our system, to the state, to the students and stakeholders in Louisiana who depend on the success of this system, I want to ask Mr. Saleem if he could, see, he could offer a motion relative to a resolution we prepared for the family.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we have the resolution presented on behalf of the Dunno family.
We have a motion by Mr. Saleem.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pierre. Before we vote, if we could, President Gallo will read it.
A resolution. Whereas Lola Walker Dunno was appointed by Governor John Bell Edwards to the Board of Supervisors for the University of Louisiana System in 2017 and reappointed in 2023. And whereas during her two terms on the board, she proficiently chaired the Academic and Student Affairs, Grievance, and Personnel Committees, as well as served as Vice Chair on Academic and Student Affairs and Grievance Committees. And whereas, Mrs. Dunno was always an engaged member of the board and confidently expressed her thoughts and opinions. And whereas, she served on countless presidential search committees, including three for Northwestern State University, her alma mater. And whereas, she maintained a tireless focus on serving students. And whereas, she was a valued member of Natchitoches, of Natchitoches at Large and First Baptist Church of Natchitoches in particular. And whereas, she exhibited strong leadership, vision, and expertise in many community, church, and private organizations. And whereas, Mrs. Dunno was inducted into the NSU Alumni Hall of Distinction, the Long Purple Line. And whereas, Lola Dunno was the loving wife of Edwin for 53 years, devoted mother of Ashley, Jason, and Jared, and proud grandmother of Lily, Sidney, Abby, Emma, Marshall, Barrett, Amelia, Jefferson, Anne, and Marie. And whereas, she had a kind and generous disposition. And whereas, words cannot adequately express the loss that is felt by all who knew her. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors for the University of Louisiana System, upon motion of Member Robert Saleem, and a unanimous second hereby honors at its board meeting the memory of Lola Walker Dunno. Thus done and signed this 24th day of October 2024 by me, Rick Gallo, President, University of Louisiana System, and Chairman Mark Romero.
If all board members can enjoin with Supervisor Pierre in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Y'all will forgive us if we don't thank for the rest of the year.
You know, Mr. Dunno, if Ms. Lola were here, she probably would put you at the end of the agenda. I'll put you not, respect him, put you at the front of it, so we respect you.
We sure did love Ms. Lola.
Well, thank you.
We're happy to be invited to meet in the Cecil J. Peacock Center on the campus of the University of Louisiana Lafayette. Dr. Savo, if you could please.
This works. There we go. On behalf of the university, let me thank all of you for being here and welcome you to the campus and to this, the Cecil Peacock Research Center. If you have a chance, go through the little beginning, there's a little display on Cecil's life and his accomplishments. Good friend, principal, teacher, rose to be a state senator, then state superintendent of education, did some really remarkable things during that term. And this building is in tribute to him. He also helped, helped us get the money to build it, so we thought that was a nice thing to do, too. So on behalf of the faculty and staff, let me welcome you all here, President Gallo and Chairman Romero and all the members of the committee. I've been given three minutes to give you an overview of the university, so I did it on a few little slides, and I'll go over there, over those with you. Who do we serve? Thirty-eight percent underrepresented backgrounds, 30% are first generation. Most of our students are full-time, 40% are pale-eligible. We have students from across the United States and several countries. A total enrollment a little over 19,000 this fall. That includes 15,000 who are degree-seeking, the rest are short-term or certification, that sort of thing. Ninety percent of our students are from Louisiana, 14% graduate students, and you can see the rest here. I think an important number there is 82% of the bachelor's degree graduates stay in Louisiana for the first three years after graduation. This past year, we awarded a record number of 3,000, a little over 3,000 degrees, 2,200 undergraduates, 719 masters, and 81 doctoral degrees. You can see the economic impact. This is a study that the system authorized a couple of years ago. Just as every institution in this system has a significant impact on their, on their regional and state communities, and this is ours. Next one, please. Now, one of the things that we've been most proud of is our growth as a research institution. This shows the increase in research expenditures over the past decade or so. And that's a significant, not only a significant number, it's significant growth. It's actually the fourth fastest-growing research university in the United States. It puts us among the top 90. Go back a little bit, I'm going to brag on this one a little bit. It puts us in the top 90 of public research universities in America. And one of the things that we're also very proud of is that we're third in the nation for working with industry. This is direct economic development activity. Excellent. Now, this past year, we celebrated our 125th anniversary as an institution. That means a couple, couple of things. We're a well-established institution, we're kind of old, and we've got a lot of old stuff. And our nature, as you've seen through that research growth, is changing significantly from where we were 20, 25 years ago. That puts a lot of strain on our physical facilities. So we're having to do a lot of work to upgrade the facilities because no longer we have labs for undergraduate students, we have to have individual labs for researchers, and we have to have specialized equipment. So we have a couple of major facilities underway. This is a new engineering classroom building. We're converting our existing engineering building into almost all laboratory space. And we're going to, so we need places to teach classes, and that's what this is. It'll be connected to the other building. We also have on the books planning money for our new sciences building, which will create a new quad, new STEM quad in the rear part of campus. And the lab school is a conversion of an existing federal facility, which is right down the road here. If you have a chance as you're, as you're leaving, it's going to be a first-class facility. We have money to start on the K through three phase of that, I think, beginning next year. Across the street, that you might be able to see, is construction of football stadium, total renovation, which is going to modernize that facility. And it's being built so that it can be very community-focused and be used multiple times a year. And we're going to invest in buying a new little stamp.
Better belt, bro.
Jimmy Clark continues to break things. I like that seal, too, Jimmy, you kind of messed it up. So that's about it. Later on today, we're going to offer you the opportunity to do a campus tour if you're interested, but we want you to have a good time, we want you to have a very productive meeting, and we're very pleased and proud to be able to host you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you again, Dr. Savo and your team, for the hospitality you've provided, and it's great to be here. At least I don't have to take a test this time. Thank you again. Now we'll move to the approval of the minutes from our August 22nd meeting. May I have a motion and a second, provided all have had a chance to review and?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Salter.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Busada. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Today, we're meeting as a committee of the whole, and each member can vote on all items. Each committee chair will conduct the business of that particular committee. We'll need a motion and a second to meet as a committee of the whole at this time.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Peterson, second by Mr. Robinson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Dr. Clark, would you please address the items that are under the Academic and Student Affairs Committee?
I certainly will, Mr. Chairman. We have three items on the Academic and Student Affairs Committee agenda. Dr. Janine O'Rourke, Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs, will provide the reports. Dr. O'Rourke, it's yours.
Good morning. This is a very tall microphone. Good morning. Thank you Supervisor Clark, Chair Romero, President Gallo, members of the board, and those in the audience. It's a great day to be here on the beautiful campus of UO Lafayette, and I thank you all for the hospitality. It's great to be on a campus and see the smiling faces of all our students. We do indeed have three agenda items, and I'll briefly walk you through all of those. Feel free to ask any questions, and we'll go ahead and start with Agenda Item G1, which is a request from Louisiana Tech to offer a Master of Science in Cognitive Science. If you recall, at the last board meeting, all of our institutions, from the CAO standpoint, presented their academic plans for the next three years, and this was the first one on the list for Louisiana Tech. This area of study, cognitive science, which is interdisciplinary in nature, is devoted to exploring the nature of cognitive processes such as perception, reasoning, memory, attention, language, imagery, motor control, and problem solving. Simply put, the goal of cognitive science is to understand how the mind works. The 39 credit hour program, graduate in nature, will allow students to develop research-oriented expertise needed to pursue doctoral studies in a related field or research-centered employment in positions such as lab management, computational linguistics, and human-computer interaction. In addition, the proposed program will provide interdisciplinary education beyond the undergraduate level that is currently not available here in the state of Louisiana. Agenda Item G2 is a request from Nichols State University to offer a Bachelor of Science in Marine Transportation. The proposed program is born out of a larger initiative that falls under the recently-created Universities of Louisiana Maritime Academy. At this time, I invite Dr. Norris, President Clune, and Captain Denning to join me at the testimony table, please, so we can provide the board members with a refresher on the Maritime Academy, share exciting updates on this endeavor, and explain the concept of the BS in Marine Transportation, which you all will consider this morning. Advance to the next slide, please. As we are all fully aware, the maritime industry is critical to America's and Louisiana's economic strength and security. In the U.S., the maritime industry employs 650,000 people and produces $150 billion in annual economic output. In Louisiana, the industry employs just under 23,000 individuals to manage the 5,000 miles of navigable rivers, bayous, creeks, man-made canals that move 238.7 million tons of freight valued at $59 billion annually. The maritime industry faces many challenges such as technological advancements, sophisticated trade flow dynamics, and an aging workforce, as well as emerging opportunities to include logistic technologies, substantial, or substantial fuels, blockchain technology, and so on. To successfully manage this such a transformation, a multidisciplinary and well-trained workforce is needed. Understanding that the higher education enterprise remains a primary vehicle for developing workforce at this scale, the concept of the UOM was imagined. Next slide. Efforts began in 2022 to package existing programs offered by our nine-member institutions to meet the needs of a maritime industry. Partnerships were forged with existing maritime training programs offered by our LCTCS partners and with industry, all toward an eye of specializing in brown and with industry, all toward an eye of specializing in brown water, the native inland and coastal waters that are critical to our state and to so many other states' economies. Next slide, please. The ULMA was designed as a comprehensive and cooperative model, with Nichols offering the four-year degree that will lead to maritime federal designation to be considered today, along with incorporating an assortment of two- and four-year degree programs, two-plus-two pathways, and specialized standards of training, certification, and watch programs and courses. Next slide, please. This image right here is how, it kind of shows how an approach will be to ensure that we provide educational avenues for the entire spectrum of professionals and career opportunities within the maritime industry. And at this time, I'll ask Dr. Norris to walk you through the next portion of the slides.
Thank you, Dr. O'Rourke. We think, next slide, please. We think it's important to tell the story of how this work began. It really is a perfect model of business and industry and higher education coming together. Conversation started at the system office, where we, our river pilots came to us and said, "Look, we have an anticipated shortage in workforce, our jobs in maritime." And so they said, "We need you guys to help us create the next, the future of talent." And so we said, "Of course." And so from there, we met with our chief academic officers. We asked them to help us identify programs that align with the maritime industry. And you'll see a list of existing degree programs here. And we started having conversations about, one, what we already have, and, two, what our next steps should be. So, again, a perfect model. Next slide, please. We got a letter of support from Governor Edwards, and we embedded this work in research. We worked with the Blanco Center to ensure that there was certainly need and that our industry was ready and well-prepared, and our students were well-prepared to meet the needs of industry. Next slide, please. And so we have a council that is made up of industry partners, higher ed partners, and we regularly meet to understand our next steps. We have experts on this committee that really have guided our work. We met with our delegation in D.C. about a month and a half ago, where we explained the need, and we were welcomed, and they were very excited about this work. On Monday, we'll be headed to Galveston to tour Texas A&amp;M Maritime Academy. We're excited about that. And we're working really hard to get our paperwork submitted to MARAD for formal recognition. And Dr. Clune will talk a little bit more about that, but today, we're here to talk really about the Bachelor of Science in Marine Transportation. Before I pass it to you, Dr. Clune, I wanted to show you the power of partnerships with business and industry. When we launched this concept, we had several of our industry partners say, "We will not only share resources with you, we will help you to the finish line. We will make sure you have the financial support that you need." And so when we start having those conversations, I believe, with business and industry and higher ed at the table, this is the type of work that could come from this. And I'll pass it to you, Dr. Clune.
Thank you, Dr. Norris. I won't repeat anything that has been said. I will point out Edison Schwest Offshore, which is among the sponsors, has been incredibly helpful. I know a lot of you probably know Mr. Gary Schwest. He put his best VP, Billy Joe, on it, and it's a very complex system to develop a marine transportation degree. You have to meet all of the Coast Guard requirements, and you have to meet all of the university requirements. You have to take all of those very complex Coast Guard requirements, turn them into academic courses, give them names and numbers, and fit them into a four-year curriculum, and that is a very complicated process. I have behind me Dr. Todd Keller, who is our Chief Academic Officer, who worked tirelessly on this, with Dr. Ken Chadwick, who directs our Maritime Management Program in the College of Business, and also Mr. Billy Joe Peters. He was incredibly important to this. I will say that we work closely with our partners in the UL system, especially the University of New Orleans. At Nichols, we do not have engineering. We're in a partnership with UNO to do engineering on our campus, but a big part of a Maritime Academy is the Marine Engineering Degree. We're offering the Marine Transportation Degree. That is what Dr. Jim Henderson tasked us with when he headed out for Louisiana Tech to develop the Marine Transportation Degree. So that is what we are presenting you with today. And I know later Captain Denning will be introduced to you. This is a godsend for us, the complexities of the Coast Guard, and also the relationships that Captain Denning has formed. She is very popular in the New Orleans sector. All of the shipbuilding owners and all the captains know Captain Denning, and we are blessed to have her. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. O'Rourke.
I would like to introduce Captain Denning. Is Captain Denning, would you like to spend a few minutes talking with the board?
I'm sure. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. It's truly a pleasure to be here today. And first of all, I would like to thank the team for all the work that they've done up to this point, and I'm really looking forward to taking that momentum and creating the nation's next state maritime academy. Very excited about that. Just a bit about my background, on the personal side, because I know that's not in the formal bio that you saw. I am married to Matt Denning. He's a captain in the Coast Guard. He's a 1998 graduate from the Merchant Marine Academy. I don't hold that against him. I'm a 1998 graduate of Coast Guard Academy. We have three children. Boys are fourteen and sixteen, and we have a daughter that's twelve. And my Coast Guard career has taken me all over the world. It was a lot of fun. I spent the first part of my career at sea, so after six years of sea time, I'd earned enough to get my Merchant Mariners license, my 100-ton license. And then I transitioned into a response-to-shore community with the Coast Guard, where I focused on emergency and disaster management, law enforcement, pollution response, and search and rescue. And the career culminated in my receiving command at Sector New Orleans. So that was a really rewarding job. I got to meet and work with a lot of wonderful people, and that was the first time that I heard about the ULMA program and what was going to be coming into existence. And what struck me when I first heard about it was the universal support that this academy had garnered from various members of state, local, and national stakeholders, folks in the industry, which is really impressive, how everybody agrees that Louisiana needs a Maritime Academy. Someone, Dr. Norris, gave me a call and asked me about the position. It was a pretty easy, absolutely, let's do this. I'm super excited. I've had more than a decade in New Orleans, Louisiana. When it came time to retire from the Coast Guard, it was very obvious that our friends and our family were really here in Louisiana, and so we're staying here. I'm excited to become a part of the community more than, you know, we've already become and to keep those maritime connections. So my focus as we move forward is, of course, working with the Coast Guard and MARAD on the approval process. And then additionally, we need to take a look at the infrastructure needs. We'll need to take a look to make sure that we're utilizing the best technology that's available for the maritime industry, and we're gonna meet the needs of Louisiana and the nation's maritime needs as well. So we'll continue to work closely with our industry partners to determine, you know, what is needed in the industry. I love the fact that we are doing a brown water and a blue water focus here in Louisiana. As you all know, we are the intersection of brown and blue water, and with a river that runs over seven-hundred million dollars of commerce every day, it is just a tremendous thing that we're doing here, again, to create the Maritime Academy in Louisiana. So I look forward to working with all of you and the advisory board and our national stakeholders and our state stakeholders and many others in the maritime industry to bring this academy to fruition. And the most important thing, once we get to the point, will, of course, be our student body. So I'm also very much looking forward to working with Open Waters and other organizations as we go throughout the state and let people know that the academy exists and work on developing a student body that's diverse and has a great skill set to bring into the maritime community. So that will be a wonderful point for us to get to when we're actually looking at the student body. And with that, I just appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this team, and what I'm feeling today is really more of a family. So thank you.
Thank you, Captain Denning. And Captain Denning will be bird-dogging this effort. You know, there hasn't been a state Maritime Academy created in over fifty years. Very daunting task. There is not a template that you just populate data into and here you go, United States Coast Guard. And none of us speak Coast Guard. There's not an app on it. I've looked, and so we are very fortunate to have such talent and Captain Denning to come and help us push this across the finish line. This is a historical moment that we're gonna create, and we appreciate the support of our member institutions and, of course, the support of our board. And Supervisor Clark, before I move on to the next item, can we ask, if anybody has any questions or comments before...
Well, we certainly can, and I do have, surprisingly.
Okay.
A question or two here. In terms of, you brought up the fact that there hasn't been an approval in over fifty years of an academy. How many total academies are there in the U.S. at this time?
There are six state and plus the one, of course, the Merchant Marine Academy.
Okay, so this, we would be number eight?
We would be seven plus one.
Seven plus one.
Yes.
Okay, all right, very good. The other thing I wanted to comment on, Dr. Clune referenced the UNO participation. I know that today, we're simply seeking to approve the Bachelor of Science in Marine Transportation. The engineering degree, do we have a timeframe or an expectation of how long that will be before, that comes before the board?
I'll defer to the good president to my left.
We began discussing that. Working with our lobbyists in Washington, D.C., the goal was to get the one degree approved and established in Marine Transportation in order to show a good faith effort to move this along, recognizing that the federal code that establishes Maritime Academies also requires the Marine Engineering Degree. So next week, we'll start on that.
All right. And given the complexities in terms of time, we're thinking a year, two years? And I look at Dr. Johnson and look at UNO folks, too, because obviously, they're gonna be intimately involved in this process. Leads me to my final summative question in terms of then, how long before the designation from the federal government, what can we expect? I mean, this is a, you know, multiple-year, decade-long? How far out are we on this?
I'll let Dr. O'Rourke explain the details. I will say that in conversations with the Coast Guard, they talked about a six-month to one-year approval process. Some of our supporters in Washington, D.C. have offered to speed that up, but the Marine Engineering Degree, I think, will go a lot faster with Captain Denning aboard than the Marine Transportation Degree went.
To add on to that, a great question, Supervisor Clark. That was one of our questions. And, you know, we're talking about federal government, no disrespect, but there's a lot of red tape that goes along with that. And so President Gallo, myself, and Dr. Norris, along with Mark Zeldin, who I think has been in front of this board before, were up on the Hill last month, it might have been yesterday, I don't know, time flies, to meet with all of the Louisiana delegation with the point of, hey, here are some updates, but when this is ready, can you make sure it gets on the right desk? And the timeframe was a six to twelve months. And just because of, and of course, I'll ask President Gallo to pop in when I finish to add, because I'm sure he can answer that question far better than I, but the things are aligning. We have Speaker of the House from Louisiana, we have Steve Scalise from Louisiana. Our delegation is extremely supportive. There is federal money that's earmarked for this initiative, and we have to strike why everything is hot. And so not asking for anybody to push something that's not ready, but we need to know if it's not ready sooner rather than later. And so extremely supportive of our congressmen and women and our senators, which is very exciting. So hopefully, we'll be here with an update in January or February to say, hey, guess what? And it's moving forward more quickly than we had hoped. President Gallo, any additional comments?
Only thing I'd add is that, in addition to all the members of Congress supporting this effort, the subject matter experts on their respective staffs are also engaged in making sure that we're making the appropriate contacts and moving it forward through the process, Dr. Clark. So this perfect alignment among our congressional delegation to keep this moving forward, including Congresswoman Letlow, who's already gotten a one-million-dollar appropriation and subject to this final step. So we're very optimistic about the alignment in Washington.
Well, I certainly impressed and have been continuously impressed over the past few years of conversations to take off from, I think it was one of your slides, you talked about the power of partnerships. I think there's also the power of passion, and I think that that has been displayed by an awful lot of people, certainly our staff. Kudos to all of you who have been so adamantly, you know, proponents of this circumstance, as well as certainly Nichols and UNO and others, and certainly our legislative delegation. So...
And look, I couldn't echo the sentiments any stronger, Supervisor Clark. I've been higher ed a long time, and this is the most exciting endeavor, but then the partners at the table that really are doing the work with us, and which is indicative of the need for something like this here in the state of Louisiana. And it's just been amazing to sit back and work with these individuals and work with them, not just, oh, here's a meeting, and I might come or might not. I mean, the actual work and time and effort, which is very precious to all of us. So it's incredible, which means we're gonna get this passed through the finish line and all celebrate with a nice bottle of champagne, hopefully.
Do you break that on the bow of a...
Yes.
Yeah, there you go.
Exactly.
There you go. Two bow, yeah.
All right, well, thank you all. Thank you all for coming and joining me at the table.
Welcome.
Were there other questions? Yeah, I think, I want to check with...
Yeah, before you guys go, thank you, Dr. Clune and Captain, for all you guys' work on this. The job opportunities in this industry are pretty unique. So can you talk about how you'll go about recruitment of students for the program and ensuring opportunities for a diverse group of folks who might be able to pursue such
The jobs for this particular degree tend to be concentrated in the New Orleans Metairie area and the Tibbetto-Homa area, with Baton Rouge and others having... There's a whole movement called Open Waters that Dr. Henderson was involved in early. Dr. O'Rourke is involved in now, with all of our industry partners getting sorted, an effort to create diversity in this as well. And that's a big goal of ours. As far as recruitment, I think Captain Denning's gonna help us figure that out. We've been heads-down trying to get the curriculum right to this point.
Supervisor Peterson, if I could add to that. We have the advisory board that was created, and on that board, we have a subcommittee that is honed in and focused on future jobs. And our industry partners are also really working with us to ensure that we have identified what jobs, what gaps there are, and so we're working with them. I should also mention that while we're really focused on the Marine Transportation Degree, there are other degrees in cybersecurity, business administration, that we certainly understand the link between those degree programs and the industry. And so we are working really hard with our industry partners to make sure there's alignment there.
Thank you.
And of course, that will, and this is an industry that, and if you don't mind, flipping back to that list of existing programs, keep on going if you don't mind, keep on going. There you go. Supervisor Peterson, as Dr. Norris mentioned, these are programs that we're already offering that, with a little slant in maritime, that is a whole, opens a whole opportunity for logistics, for transportation, for the feeding of individuals and culinary on the ships. But we also have to work with our K-12 partners to make sure that the young people that will be coming through the pipeline are aware of this industry, and so that will be the next step of how you market all of this. And we do understand that that does need to be, because young folks don't understand the opportunities that are available in this industry, and if they do have a little understanding, they don't have a true appreciation. So great question. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Clark.
Great. Thank you all. And then our last agenda item for Academic and Student Affairs is Item G3, and I invite Dr. Calley to present that item.
Good morning, Board Chair, members of the board, President Gallo. Agenda Item G3 is the Revised Free and Expressive Speech Policy, M22. In addition, Act 584 of the 2024 legislature is provided in your folders for your review. The system policy has been revised in accordance with Act 584 and is presented for your approval today. If approved, the revised policy pursuant to Board Rules Part II, Chapter VII, Section III will become effective on the tenth day after Board adoption, unless stated otherwise. Once the rule is final, the campus policies, which have already been reviewed with suggested revisions... revisions, will be implemented by the campuses to comply with the approved system policy. Council for the board has reviewed the revisions and further provided an advanced copy of the draft revisions to the Board of Regents Council as required by statute and the executive order issued on October 1st. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Calley, if I'm understanding, council has, our council has looked at and has complied with all the regulations?
That concludes, unless anyone has any questions, that concludes all items, and so we'll just need some motions to approve those, please.
All right. Well, thank you, Dr. O'Rourke, for all the presentations and the discussion that we've had. If no one requires further clarification, I'd like to recommend approval of items G1 through G3. May I have a motion and a second?
I'll move.
Moved by Supervisor Russell.
Second.
Second by Dr. Leatherman. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Then I'm going to go ahead and call for the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Is there any other business to come before the committee at this time? If not, I believe we go to Mr. Chairman Athletics?
Yep. Dr. Noble, would please address athletic items at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have 12 items on the Athletic Committee today, all are consent agenda items. Mr. Bruschani will provide a brief overview of these items.
Thank you so much, Dr. Noble. Each of you were sent out the contract and the executive summaries that denote specifics of each contract. At this time, campuses are requesting approval of the following. Item H1 to H4, Grambling, contract amendments with Justin Wager, head soccer coach Nikaya Hall, head softball coach Paige Phillips, head volleyball coach Gavin Pierre, head baseball coach. Item H5 is from Louisiana Tech, requesting approval of contract with Josh Ashley, Assistant Women's Basketball Coach, Olivia Grayson, Assistant Women's Basketball Coach, Caitlin Livingston, Assistant Women's Basketball Coach, Joseph Blue, Assistant Track and Field Coach, and Colorado Romito, Assistant Women's Tennis Coach. From McNeese, item 86, a contract with amendment with Frank Wigan Wade, Head Men's Basketball Coach. Item 87 is from University of Louisiana Lafayette, contract with Allison Habitz. She's the new head softball coach, and I'm pleased to say that Dr. Brian Maggert, the coach, is here, and she said her name is Habitz, is like good habits, so that's a welcome coach. Item H8 through H9 from University of Louisiana Monroe, contract with Bailey Young, Beach Volleyball Head Coach, and Bryant Vincent, who's the head football coach. Finally, items H10 through H12 from University of New Orleans, contract with Benjamin Hibbert, Head Men and Women's Cross Country Track and Field Coach, Jeff Lorio, Head Men's Golf Coach, and a contract amendment with Tim Duncan, Vice President of Athletics and Recreation. Those are all the consent items I have, Dr. Noble.
These agenda items have been reviewed by staff and are recommended for approval. Of course, if any member has a question or wishes to discuss this item, please let me know at this time. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the public? If no one requires further clarification of the consent agenda items, may I have a motion and a second for approval of items H1 to H12? Motion by Supervisor Russell.
Second.
Second by, I think that's Supervisor Salter. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Do we have any other business at this time?
Dr. Noble, I'd like to maybe ask Dr. Maggert and our softball coach here at University of Louisiana Lafayette to maybe come up and say a few words. Is that appropriate at this time? I'm not sure if there's others in the audience from the athletic approval that we just had, but I take personal privilege in doing this. Allison and I go way back. She was a student when I was a dean of students here, and I've seen the growth and the maturity and the extraordinary talent that she had as an athlete here at UL, you know, transcends to her obvious influence on the University of Alabama program, and we're just so excited in this community to have her back. And so, is it appropriate to ask her to come up and say a few words?
Sure.
Absolutely. We'll just put it on your tab, Dr. Clark.
Dr. Clark, I think you put her on the spot.
Ah, good.
Do this.
Absolutely.
I just thank you all so very much. Dr. Clark, yeah, we go way back. Actually, I knew his daughter, who's now my boss, since she was like five years old, and now she's my boss. So, that's, talk about full circle. But it's an honor to be here in your presence, but it's such a joy to be home, back home in Cajun country in Louisiana. I'm just so proud of this community, to be from Louisiana. When I was at Alabama, oftentimes, we'd recruit kids from Louisiana, which I loved, because they'd always bring a lot of good food, but they would oftentimes, you know, when things got really exciting, they'd say, "Yo, she hit the ball hard, yeah." All of our players would look at me like, Coach Calley, what is she saying? So, I felt like I was kind of the interpreter of the Cajun language. So, here, I don't have to do that. We can just all talk Cajun, it's great. But again, I appreciate this contract and this opportunity. I'm grateful to Dr. Maggert for, obviously, getting me here, but to all of you for approving that. So, thank you so much.
Any other business at this time? If not, that concludes the business of the Athletic Committee. Do we have a motion to adjourn and a second?
Actually, we'll just move on to our next committee being audit. Ms. Stokes, if you could, please proceed with the audit committee.
Thank you. We have one item on the audit committee today that is a discussion item. Ms. Jennifer Oberthier will provide a brief overview.
Item, item I1, University of Louisiana System Report on Internal and External Audit Reports, Activity from August 14 through October 14, 2024. Last week, each board member received a listing of the internal and external reports completed by various auditors since the last board meeting. Also included in that audit summary are internal audits that are currently in progress and a follow-up timetable to ensure recommendations made in prior reports are implemented. This is a report only, and no action by the board is necessary.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the public? I would like to thank Ms. Oberthier for a job well done. I really appreciate your oversight and the help that you provide to this board. So, thank you very much. Assuming that we have no other business at this time?
I'm overproven. Bertha Robinson, I'm overproven.
Okay, thank you. I don't think we usually do that. I don't think we have to do that, but thank you. I don't think, I don't think we have to do that. But thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Stokes. Supervisor Peterson will now address items on the facilities planning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have seven items on the facilities planning committee that are on the consent agenda. We also have one item, J8, that'll be discussed separately. Mr. Janey will give us an overview on the consent agenda items.
Well, thank you so much, Supervisor Peterson, for stepping in as chair. I really appreciate it. Each of you were sent out the executive summaries that denote the specifics of each item, and for those campuses with naming requests, each president has submitted appropriate justification as required by our board rule. The first item is J1 from Grambling, requesting to amend the facilities and ground lease, and the lease back with the Grambling University Foundation for the purpose of continuing improvements, replacing scoreboards, and making additional technology improvements for the Eddie Robinson Memorial Stadium Football Field and the Frederick C. Hobbie Assembly Center pursuant to state law. Just this past August, each of you approved this lease, but the Hobbie Assembly Center was not specifically named, and President LaMell has asked that that be named specifically within the lease and executed such. Item J2, Louisiana Tech, name a classroom in Bogart Hall, John Calhoun Mechanical Engineering Innovation Lab. J3 from Louisiana Tech, name a classroom in use by the Emergent Learning Research Institute in Woodard Hall, the Higginbotham Create Studio. J4 from McNeese, name the Southwest Entrepreneurial Economic Development, known as the Seed Center, the Hennings Seed Center. Item J5 is from Nichols, requesting permission to amend its five-year capital outlay plan, which the board approved this past August, to increase the cost of the new coastal center from $26 million to $29 million. The additional $3 million in funds has been secured through Congressman Garrett Graves by a National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration federal grant. This funding will provide facilities for future engineering workforce development center, which will become an annex to the coastal center. Item J6 is from Northwestern, name the Casperi third-floor conference room, the Jerry Pierce Conference Room. J7 is from University of Louisiana at Lafayette. They want to enter into a farm lease with T&amp;B Farms LLC for 35 acres of farm land at the university's Kate Research Facility as authorized by state law. T&amp;B Farms was selected through a competitive process through different proposals. The lease premises are in presently in a state of disrepair and not used by the university. T&amp;B Farms will improve the condition of the lease premises and its sole cost and expense so it can be used for harvesting crawfish and rice. The improvements will include, but not limited, leveling and plowing the fields and the repairing of levees as needed, and thereafter continue to maintenance and improve condition. The lease will begin on October 25, 2024, and have initial term of three years, which three additional one-year option terms. And those are all the consent items I have, Supervisor Peterson.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Janey. All of these consent agenda items have been reviewed by staff and outside council and are recommended for approval. Are there any questions or comments from any board members or anyone needing additional Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
And I'll second. Motion by Mr. Salem and seconded by Dr. Clark. Is there any public discussion? Any comments from the public? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that is, the consent agenda items are approved. I'll turn it over to Mr. Janey to go through item J8.
Okay, item J8 is from University of New Orleans. Sell the Go-Rang Hall to the Ogden Museum of Southern Arts on terms and conditions acceptable to the board, and for the sale price to be no less than the appraised value. The sale would be in accordance with University of Louisiana System Immtle Property Guidelines sell to a specific buyer and in accordance with Act 485 of the 2024 Regular Session of the Louisiana Legislature. And Mr. Brandon DeQueer is going to come up, should you have any particular questions.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, any questions from the board or any clarity needed on this item?
I have questions.
Mr. Robinson?
Yeah. Is there an appraisal on the property now?
There is. There was an appraisal that was done in 2021.
And what was that value?
I believe it was.
Approximately?
I believe it was $7,900,000.
And proceeds from the sale would go to?
The University of New Orleans.
University of New Orleans, okay. What is the proposed sale price?
As of now, I understand the proposed sale price is $3.5 million based on offsets and credits that AMSA has provided for the reduction in the sale price.
And those offsets equate to the appraisal value as currently stated?
Actually, it's a little bit different. The current draft purchase agreement actually has the sale price at roughly $8.8 million based on the offsets that they have produced to us, and then settling in at a sale price of $3.5 million. I've only been provided basic information on the offsets, but there's still a little bit of legwork to do there.
Who values the offsets?
That was information provided directly from AMSA.
And we now have to get someone to value those offsets to suggest that they are?
We simply just need to verify the numbers that they've provided to us through some supporting documentation.
As I appreciate matters, that's a cost basis, the offsets are provided to us on a cost basis?
Correct. So, for instance, and I'm just using it as an example, if they made capital improvements in the way of an HVAC or other things, they would have backup material for that. They simply just provided a very brief synopsis and schedule simply to get the ball.
That's important, that value, that expenditure.
Correct.
Mrs. Salem, oh, go ahead.
And this might not be properly directed to you, but as I understand it, this is, that this building and this situation is right now at the present time a tremendous financial drain on UNO?
The university is expending direct resources for the maintenance and operational facility. And by that, I mean utility costs primarily and insurance.
And it's several hundred thousand dollars a year?
It is.
How long have we been in discussions and negotiations on this?
It depends on what iteration we're referring to. As it relates to, I think, the current, and I'll say current, meaning in the last, let's just say, five to seven years is how long this has been ongoing. But do keep in mind that I think some of this predates even when the University of New Orleans was a part of the University of Louisiana system.
LSU system.
Exactly. I tend not to use that word here.
Just trying to help give clarification, Mr. Counsel.
There's only one University of Louisiana we're here.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
You won't get any arguments here.
Are there other questions, board members? Mr. DeQueer?
Yes, sir.
Provided we come to terms on the value of the improvements and sale price, the university UNO, is it comfortable with the time horizon for the receipt of the sale proceeds?
Don't really have a good answer for that, because I think there's still a little bit of groundwork left to be done, but if you're referring to how the payment would be made, you know, I think most people would like it all at once. But, you know, I'll leave that to the discretion of you gentlemen and ladies to finalize in the ultimate details of the transaction.
Well, so what are the next steps for the board?
So, what we're seeking today, or at least what's being presented to you today, is to authorize us to go ahead and enter into a sale pursuant to Act 57 of the 2021 Legislative Session and that act as amended by 485 of the 2024 Legislative Session. That's what's in front of you. Now, if you look at the two bills, there is some changes between Act 57 and 485 that I think we've been discussing with AMSA's counsel as well as with the division.
But that, that motion would not lock us into any specific terms. Currently, it is to pursue additional.
The terms are not finalized in such a way where you're looking at the, here's what you're actually going to sign. There's still a little bit left to be done in terms of. There's still a little bit left to be done in terms of finalizing the exact documents that would be ultimately entered into.
Thank you.
We're essentially approving some negotiation or at least vetting of the proposed terms.
Right. I think at this point, what the approval would primarily be centered on is just the sale price as measured against the credits and then compliance with the remaining terms in the two acts. So we could either do it on a full receipt basis where they pay all of the consideration or it could be done on an installment. Those are still within the tenets of the authorization that you'll be providing.
Mr. Salim?
Does the act require any kind of current appraisal?
So, we had that appraisal done. We did send, I think it, two or three meetings ago, the Board did authorize us to request from the Division of Administration an updated appraisal. That has been done. At least the request for the updated appraisal has been done. I have not been provided whether or not the update has been complete or not. But I will suggest this, them increasing the purchase price up to roughly $8.8 million. I don't know that the building would have prey or would have increased in value another $1.8 million from 2021 to 2024.
Thank you. Ms. Stokes?
Yeah, so we don't have the final appraisal yet. We have the draft of, and I received it, you know, from outside of this process. And I'm just wondering if everyone has the purchase agreement? That is on this board?
So the purchase agreement is still in draft form.
Yeah.
I think as you will see, whomever prepared it obviously was probably not fully aware that one UNO is no longer a part of LSU. So there's some things that need to be clarified there. Again, it was recently provided to us, but I think the starting point was, you know, the sale price, the three and a half million, you know, measured against the credits and offsets. And then from there, any other considerations to be given, which would be either on an installment basis or paid directly over time. I'm sorry, I'm looking at you.
Yeah, now I'm half deaf, I'm sorry.
And any other considerations that would be pursuant to the act.
And where does, I think somebody actually asked this, but where does the management of the University of New Orleans stand on this agreement?
So without speaking directly for Dr. Johnson, I will say this much, that the building and what it's doing has not generated or produced a real usable resource for the institution. They are having to pay expenditures of insurance, both light, gas, and water, which they would very much like to be relieved of those burdens. Now, obviously, you know, we do want to make sure it's done in the most appropriate manner if we're going to sell, that we're not just cutting it from underneath us.
And so, you know, I think from our perspective, we just want to make sure that, I know that there is definitely, without speaking for the university, somewhat of a sense of desperation to move past this point and get a deal done. But just to make sure that we've got, you know, a fair deal established. And so, you know, I'm just kind of looking for a read here as to that we feel like we have reached that.
Maybe at this time, may I make a motion? And then certainly the discussion following.
Can I, before you do that, Mr. Clark, I think it'd be helpful, Mr. DeQueer, just one sort of recap what the expectation is here of the Board?
Yeah.
To help Dr. Clark craft a motion.
Certainly. So the expectation is that you guys would authorize the President, typically you authorize the President of the institution, but if you want to authorize President Gallo and/or President Johnson to enter into final sale docs once negotiated for the transfer of the property from the University of New Orleans, stated more correctly, the Board of Supervisors on behalf of the University of New Orleans to OMSA, which is the Ogden Museum of Southern Art Incorporated. The term, or at least the sale price, will be $3.5 million. The verification will be upon the credits and/or offsets that they have produced. And that's what we're asking for authorization today.
And so what Supervisor Clark's motion? What's your motion to approve?
He hadn't gotten there yet.
I haven't given it, but I'm prepared to give it. I do want there to be the opportunity and understood that once the motion is on the floor, that there can be conversation and discussion that takes place. And quite frankly, I'd like to hear Dr. Johnson, you know, at least, you know, besides nodding her head to be able to weigh in as the UNO President. I think that would be appropriate. I don't know the timing of it. And if we want to have something on the floor.
If the Board wishes, if it's the Board's wish to hear from Dr. Johnson, we should do that before. I'd like us to do it before motion. Before Dr. Johnson comments, I wanted to verify, Brandon, it's my understanding that we discontinued payment of any utility costs as of when?
That is my understanding. The conversation I had with Dr. Johnson's administration was earlier this spring, you know, I understood that they had already ceased those payments. I'm a guess like April, May, is kind of when I had the conversation. So somewhere within that 30-day span. Dr. Johnson may be able to further elaborate.
Thank you.
Yeah, first, let me just thank you all for the conversation. This is, I think, in a nutshell, this was an incredible opportunity for deepening the partnerships between the University of New Orleans and the City of New Orleans around the arts. The timing was terrible because it happened, I think, just before Katrina. And honestly, to my knowledge, and again, I'm entering into this play in the very last act, to my knowledge, there really has not been those academic connections that were originally anticipated with our School of Fine Arts, with our students, and with our faculty. And so when I learned about this, and I learned about this in doing the financial analysis, I was worried, and I'm grateful for Dr. Gallo and at the time Supervisor Clark for listening. And I think that it's a natural progression to move down this path. Now, it is up to you to determine the terms of the sale. I would, as it's been said, we would be very happy to be relieved of the expenses. And of course, at this time, in our university's history, we're working very quickly to try to realign our budget. So every dollar matters. I would be the first to say that I would be delighted, when this is behind us, to examine ways of rekindling partnerships, not just with the Ogden Museum, but with other arts organizations in the region. In terms of the last payment for utilities, I believe that there was a payment in the spring made by the foundation, and then we ceased after that point. But I don't have the month in my memory.
Thank you.
May I ask, of course, Dr. Johnson, remind me, and again, this goes back months, but there was a time when a part of the discussion was that upon sale, or if it were to occur, that there would be provisions that would allow UNO access to the facility or fundraising opportunities, or there was still some expected interactions that would benefit UNO? Is that, am I imagining this?
I'm not aware. I've heard conversations about that. And certainly, just like we would love to utilize lots of wonderful facilities downtown, that could be an option going forward. But, you know, it would be a nice to have, not a need to have at this time.
Sure. I guess what I'm saying is that as a part of the conversation, it was my understanding that the Board of the Ogden Museum of South would help put on a fundraiser for UNO annually or allow you to do that and to use their facility to conduct that? Is that, am I?
So I have not talked with the Chair of the Board. Again, I've heard this discussed. But I've not seen any great detail. That sounds like a wonderful idea, but I'll leave it at that.
Okay, all right, just wondering. Are there any other, any other questions, Mr. Brown?
Is there currently any academic purpose to the building?
I don't, certainly not with our university. Yeah.
It's not academically programmed as you would think of a building, but for the purposes of providing arts to the students, there is an academic purpose in that.
I just didn't know if we had, like, students in the building, students coming around.
Okay. No other questions? There is, Mr. Stokes?
So when we approve a motion, we are approving a sale price of 3.5?
That would be subject to the offsets, yes. So keep in mind, I've been provided a high-level schedule of what they've put into the building. I still need the supporting documentation for some of those items. So at a minimum, if all things hold, it would be 3.5 million. Those offsets would have brought it to that total price or that reduced price.
From 8.88?
Correct. If for whatever reason, some of the capital expenditures that they suggest are not verifiable, then the price would only go up.
So by our action today, we're not fixed in that respect?
No, there would be a little bit of slide based on final review of those supporting documents that justify that price.
My concern is authorizing a sale on terms yet to be finalized.
Yeah.
And so there's still work to be done. I think we've all acknowledged that. And the concept is absolutely fine with me, but the details matter.
Sir.
And I hope that Supervisor Clark's motion addresses that concern.
Mr. Chairman, yes. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I believe the terms are prescribed in Act 485. What I would like to offer is that we're maybe going to establish that it's not, no sale price less than?
Not less than 3.5?
Is that a fair consideration?
Not less than 3.5 net, net, net.
Correct.
The act says appropriate value. So what is appropriate value? Typically, that is determined by the price.
Right.
Typically.
And a firm understanding of the offsets, too, would be very helpful. Very much, I mean, I know how long and fought this has been to get this resolved. And I just want it resolved, just like, you know, everybody else. I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing by the University of New Orleans and, for that matter, by the purchasers, who are important parts of our community. But, you know, we just want to make sure that the terms are fair.
To Chairman Romero's point, Act 45 spells out succinctly that here's what can be considered for credit against the sale price. It is also further supported by what we would call the standard constitutional guardrails. It still has to comply. Even though you present these items, it still must be in compliance with state law and the Constitution for entering into this type of sale. So I understand what your point is. I think it is captured in that instrument. It says while we acknowledge we're going to give you some credit here, it still has to be done pursuant to what our current law is.
Okay. And so in your legal opinion, you feel comfortable?
In my opinion is, once I have the supporting documentation adjusted, yes, we will be there.
Okay. And we're not premature at this point to offer the motion, right?
No, I do not believe that you're premature in this. This would be a natural progression, especially in light of this board meeting every other month. We have a stated sale price. We have a bill that says you could do the transaction, for the most part, within this, as long as you stay within this dynamic. And so now we're simply just wrapping up the final pieces of the transaction.
Supervisor Stokes, I think it would be premature to sell the building tomorrow. But again, I think we have a motion that's forthcoming that would allow further investigation and research and vetting of the terms.
In accordance with the act and?
The act and the Constitution and the law.
The law, right, okay.
Mr. Salim?
No, I, Mr. Deque, answered the question I had.
What is the wish of the Board? Is there a motion? I'd like to make a motion. Go, please. I'd like to move to authorize President Gallo to execute documents for the sale of Golding Hall to Ogden Museum of Southern Art Incorporated, subject to the following. One, terms and conditions pursuant to Act 57 of the 2021 Legislative Session and Act 485 of the 2024 Legislative Session. And two, to authorize and direct Board Counsel to seek an Attorney General's opinion on compliance with Acts and State Constitution and Louisiana law for the passage of said sale to OMSA.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Dr. Clark, seconded by Supervisor Stevens. Is there any further discussion from the Board on the motion? Any discussion from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, thank you, Dr. Clark. Is there any other business to come before the Facilities Committee? Thank you, Mr. Janey.
Thank you, Supervisor Peterson.
Thank you, Supervisor Peterson. Mr. Basada will address our items on the Finance Committee for today. Thank you, Mr. Basada.
We have three items on the Finance Committee agenda. All are consent items. Mr. Eddie Mesh will and Ms. Ashley McIntyre will provide a brief overview of the consent items.
Thank you, Ms. Basada. Item K one, Nickel State University's request for approval to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Nickel State University Foundation. Nichols is requesting the Board to approve, for approval, to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Nickel State Foundation to allow the foundation and its management partner, Balanced Media Technology, to harness the power of idle computer processing capacity to create a virtual supercomputer. The foundation and BMT need the computer processing capability to continue its work in areas such as advanced research, development of new technology-based curriculums, and the creation of possible commercialization of intellectual property. This collaborative relationship is anticipated to allow the university to gain greater efficiencies in the normal operation of the university through deployment of AI and machine learning to perform repetitive operational tasks with the university in a secure environment. All cybersecurity protocols will be utilized in this arrangement, and no university data shall be exposed in an unsecure manner. The university will incur no cost under this agreement, but will gain access to and benefit from the work product developed by BMT in its work to use innovative technology to create solutions and opportunities, benefiting not only the immediate region, but a farther-reaching marketplace that may be served by the technology developed. Cooperative endeavor agreement will begin on the date of execution and terminate June 30, 2034. This agreement may be renewed for successive five-year terms under the agreement of the university and the foundation.
Item K two is the system's financial status of alternatively-financed projects for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024. Alternatively-financed projects are facility construction projects that are financed and constructed by campus-affiliated nonprofit corporations like foundations and facility corporations. Universities lease their land to the nonprofits, and the nonprofits finance and construct the facilities and then lease the completed facilities back to the universities for their use. In many cases, the nonprofits will incur debt to finance these projects, and campus facility lease payments finance the bond payments. Semi-annually, campuses report the financial status of those projects to the system. Campuses report results of operations and debt coverage ratios of their projects. A debt coverage ratio of 1.0 would indicate that operations funded just enough to make debt payments with no excess funds. These projects are reported as either student housing projects or non-student housing projects. In total, campuses reported student housing revenues of approximately $75 million, expenditures of $26 million, annual debt obligations of $34 million. Adjustment for, after adjustment for subordinating costs, the debt coverage ratio is 1.53. Campuses did not express any concern regarding their individual student housing projects. Non-housing projects would include student unions, parking garages, recreational facilities, athletic facilities, and similar projects. In total, campuses reported non-housing revenues of approximately $24 million, expenditures of $8 million, annual debt obligations of $11 million, and a debt coverage ratio of 1.5 after adjustment for subordinating costs of $500,000. Campuses did not express any concern regarding their individual non-student housing projects. All management certifications are available for review in the system office and are available upon request. This is a report only, and no action by the Board is necessary. Item K three is the system's report of fiscal year '24 fourth quarter financial reports and ongoing assurances. In your materials, you'll see all of the financial reports I'll be discussing. The first report is a The first report is a comparison of the operating budget versus actual revenues for fiscal year 2024. The second report is a comparison of actual operating activity between fiscal years '23 and '24, and there are a few items to note. For fiscal year '24, the system had recognized 98% of available budgeted revenues and expenses for a total of 949 million. As seen in the prior year-to-current year comparison, this is an increase in actual revenues and expenses from the prior year of 6% or 51 million. Only 66% of budgeted other revenues were collected, and the prior year-to-current year comparison also shows that actual other revenues were 25 million less than last year. This is mostly due to the fact that indirect costs collected were lower than expected due to several COVID-related grants ending. It is also caused by one campus anticipating needing a large transfer to support the operating budget, but this ended up not being needed because of increased enrollment and decreased expenses. In the prior year-to-current year comparison, research expense increased by 23 million from last year, and this has been noted throughout fiscal year '24 as being due to ULL's one-time research funding. Also, in the prior year-to-current year comparison, other charges and interagency expense increased by 35 million from last year, and this is also mostly due to that one-time research funding and also due to increased scholarships as a result of increased enrollment. There were no other large variances that are unexplained or cause concern. The next report shows the results of the system's auxiliary and athletic operations, showing the revenues, expenses, and change in fund balance for fiscal year '24. I've also provided a report with this information broken out by campus. Revenues totaled 257 million, expenses were 306 million, and net transfers in were 1.5 million, resulting in an overall current year operating deficit of 47 million, which has grown by about 20 million from last year's current deficit of 27 million. For the third quarter, campuses were projecting that the ending fund balance would be a negative 5 million, but the actual ending deficit was significantly higher at negative 23 million. Additionally, last year's ending fund balance of the system was a positive 24 million and has been significantly reduced to a negative 23 million. The next report presents each campus's current year athletic deficits for both fiscal year '23 and '24. Overall, the athletic deficit grew from 17 million to 41 million. Auxiliary and other institutional reserves continue to be depleted to cover the athletic deficits. The last report presents the receipts, disbursements, and changes in fund balance of certain restricted funds for fiscal year '24, and this completes our report for the fiscal year 2024 fourth quarter.
For the first quarter of fiscal year '25, which would be reported at the December meeting, the quarterly reports' format and purpose will change. Historically, quarterly reports reported certain segment information, including comparisons of individual operating fund revenue and expenditure line items, and information about auxiliary and certain restricted fund operations and balances. However, the reports did not include all institutional funds, did not reflect the financial position of the institutions as a whole, and did not indicate whether the institution's overall level of operations were sustainable. Although the new report will continue to provide certain information of the previous quarterly report, a greater emphasis of the new report would provide the board with an understanding of institution's overall financial position and sustainability. Specifically, the report will remove operating fund excess authority and reflect whether estimated revenues equal estimated expenditures after excess authority is removed. If the budget is not balanced, the report will show the amount of expenditures being moved to other university funds to balance the operating fund budget. The new report will keep the auxiliary athletic report, but it will also show the effect of operating fund deficits and athletic deficits on the overall institutional reserves and whether the institution is or is not in a sustainable position. If an institution reports a structural deficit, the report will require the institution to provide a written plan concerning how it will correct its structural deficit, and these plans will be shared with the board. This is a report only, and no action is required of the board. This completes the consent items, Mr. Basada.
Consent agenda item K1 has been reviewed by the board staff, and the staff recommends approval. Of course, if any member has a question or wishes to discuss any of these items, please let me know. Any questions from the board? Are there any comments from the public? If no one requests any further clarification of consent agenda items, may I have a motion and a second for approval of item K1? You have a motion here, but...
So moved.
Second, yeah? Is there any discussion? In that case, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Do we have any other business at this time? Having none, that concludes the business of the Finance Committee. The next committee is Personnel.
Thank you, Supervisor Basada. This time Supervisor Davidson will address Personnel Committee items.
Thank you. We have nine consent and two discussion items on the Personnel Committee agenda today that are being presented by Ms. Keisha Neal. She'll provide an overview of today's items.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Good afternoon, Chair Romero, President Gallo, and board members. Consent items. L1, Louisiana Tech University's request for approval to appoint Dr. Richard A. Crawford as Senior Vice President of Student Advancement and Chief Operating Officer effective September 1st, 2021. L2, Louisiana Tech University's request for approval to appoint Dr. Ramu Chandran as Interim Vice President of Research effective September 1st, 2024. L3, Nickel State University's request for approval to appoint Mr. Terry Bro as Executive Vice President of Finance and Administration effective September 1st, 2024. L4, Nickel State University's request for approval to appoint Dr. Michelle Terrio as Interim Dean of the College of Liberal Arts effective September 1st, 2024. L5, Northwestern State University's request for approval to appoint Dr. William Drake Owens as Executive Vice President and Chief of Staff effective August 5th, 2024. L6, Southeastern Louisiana University's request for approval to appoint Dr. Patrick J. Moyer as Interim Dean of Science and Technology effective June 29, 2024. L7, Southeastern Louisiana University's request for approval to appoint Dr. Daniel McCarthy as Interim Dean of Research and Innovation effective June 29, 2024. L8, University of Louisiana at Lafayette's request for approval to appoint Dr. Tracy L. Cross as Dean of the College of Education and Human Development effective August 1st, 2024. L9, University of Louisiana at Lafayette's request for approval to appoint Dr. Annie Kokobobo as Dean of the College of Liberal Arts effective August 4th, 2024. And, Mr. Davidson, this concludes the consent items to be approved today.
Okay, the consent agenda items have been reviewed by staff and are recommended for approval. Are there any questions or comments from the board at this time? Any comments from the public? Any further discussion or clarification? All right, may I have a motion and a second for approval of items L1 through L9 listed on the agenda? Moved by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Mr. Salter, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, back to Keisha for L10.
L10 is University of New Orleans' request for... Request to waive the requirement of a national search for the position of Vice President of Research and the position of Vice President for Finance and Administration, and we have Dr. Johnson here to provide any additional information.
Thank you so much, Keisha. Thank you, Supervisors. So I think that there's material in the packets that provide the justification for the Vice President for Research. This is a position, honestly, that the provost had been filling for some time, and I have been filling it since January, and we just, for the mission of our institution, we need someone who is going to be able to champion our research mission and increase our external awards by our faculty. So we are really trying to nurture our talent from within, and we were hoping to have permission for an appointment of a fixed period of time to appoint an internal candidate. We have not begun the search yet. We are waiting, of course, for this vote, but that would be the plan. And for the Vice President for Finance and Administration, we had a resignation in this area. I've consulted with President Gallo and the system staff. I'm delighted that Dr. Edwin Litolf is interested in the position, but contingent on your approval, we were hoping to move to appoint him effective November 1st.
Just for the board's info, we've also talked to Counsel Brandon DeQueer, and he's said that all of this meets with the approval of our rules and bylaws, that they can waive the national search and avoid the expense of that when there's a strong feeling that it can be done internally. And you jumped ahead to the other one. We'll ask if there's any other discussion on L10, I believe. Mr. Basada?
I'm making a motion that we move forward with waiving the national search and approving the request.
Do we have a second on that?
A second, a second.
Peterson?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. You already talked about L11. That's a... Do we need a motion there also?
I move that we accept that one.
Motion from Mr. Basada?
I second that again.
Second, any further discussion? Dr. Clark?
Point of clarification, if I'm correct, Dr. Litolf is currently employed in another one of our system schools, and we appropriately communicated, and everything is copasaic in that front.
Got a player to be named later, a trade. No, I think it's a better family situation, and I think Gramblin is confident that they're going to be able to come out of this well, okay? Also, we've talked to Dr. Gallo, and he's talked to Dr. Lamell, and we're not weakening Gramblin, we think, correct?
Correct, yes, and I've spoken with Dr. Lamell as well.
We might get some of that cash from that new building sale.
It's three years, but they got way out.
Yeah, no. I'm very pleased with this, you know, potential circumstance. I think that everybody benefits from it. I just want to be sure there had been communication all the way around.
Yes, there has.
There has. I think we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
I think we need to, Mr. Davidson, ask if there's public comment before.
That's right, any public comment?
My limited understanding is your call, Mr. Terry.
Appreciate that.
Question, question, Dr. Clark, for employing me in this role, if Mr. Romero... Keep the role, go.
Anything from the public? Not hearing anything, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Do we have any other business?
Are there any persons in this audience that we approved their positions that...
I believe we do.
...would like to be presented?
I think let's start with...
We also have Dr. Crawford here with Louisiana Tech. He wasn't on the list.
We'll start with Louisiana Tech, and we'll introduce all of those that are present that we just approved.
Mr. Chairman, it was not included in the materials, but I did some research and found that Dicky Crawford averaged just under one point, just under one rebound, and just half an assist over 70 games playing for Louisiana Tech under the Tommy Joe Eagles. But he has committed over 30 years as a true professional in student services. He is advanced. This is, in fact, in large part, the credit is due to him and the culture they've created there to have the shortest time to degree, great retention rates, success across all student populations. He is a certified public accountant, and his role is expanding. He has long been over auxiliary enterprises in addition to all of the other things. In fact, I couldn't find something that he wasn't over for a long time, but he's been an exemplary leader at Louisiana Tech, and this allows us to move forward with our finance operations and integrate some of these functions together. And I'm delighted to introduce you to Dr. Dicky Crawford.
Thank you, President Gallo, Chairman Romero, board members, thank you for this opportunity. My lack of success in basketball is, he just enumerated, his reason I'm grateful to have an opportunity in higher education, but I appreciate Dr. Henderson giving me this opportunity, but my 30-plus years at Louisiana Tech has been a blessing. I've been able to work with great professionals there. It's been a team effort in all the things that we've been able to accomplish and do there to move Louisiana Tech University ahead, and this opportunity will be no different. We'll be working as a team to create atmosphere and culture and facilities in a university that are going to help University, Louisiana Tech University, but also help our students and to... Our number-one goal is to recruit students and retain students and help them graduate, and everything we do is going to be focused on that. That's my priority, and I know it's Dr. Henderson's priority, and this is the opportunity for us to continue to do that, so thank you.
Dr. Ramachandran's not here, so we'll go Dr. Kloon... Dr. Kloon's Nichols. While they get ready, I will just say that Dicky Crawford averaged 20 points a game as a power forward for a Temple Baptist church with me as a point guard dishing it to him, so.
Thank you, Supervisor Davidson. I am honored to have Mr. Terry Bro up here with me. As many of you know, these last few years have been very difficult for many of us, including Nickel State University, and it's been a challenge. And I can't imagine having gone through all that without Mr. Terry Bro as the Vice President for Finance and Administration and CFO to get us through these very difficult times. But this really acknowledges what is already a reality in that a lot of the day-to-day operations of that institution falls to Mr. Terry Bro, so I am honored to have him with me today.
Chair Romero, President Gallo, members of the board, first, let me say thank you for approving Dr. Kloon's recommendation. Secondly, I'd like to thank Supervisor Davidson for inviting me to the table. He finally had to sit next to me. He has a tendency to... Dr. Kloon has a tendency to try to sit on the other side of the table, because usually if he asks for something, I say no, and he wants to make sure I say it loudly. So I appreciate the confidence that he's had in me, the opportunity. I've had a wonderful run of about eight years at Nickel State University. Prior to that, I had about 29 or 30 years in industry, so it's been an interesting transition from industry to government, but I look forward to the next years serving him and the Nichols community, so thank you all very much.
Dr. Genovese, do you have a Northwestern? Juris doctorate, right?
Yeah, juris doctorate.
We don't, we don't really.
We'll take that. We have before us a request for approvals to appoint Dr. William Drake Owens, Executive Vice President and Chief of Staff, effective August 5th, which was... Thank you for that. When I first came here, I'm very definitely the new kid on the block, probably the oldest new kid on the block, but a new kid on the block regardless, and one of the first things that I wanted to do was to meet with personnel and to determine, get a good staff behind me, because I knew that I would need that. And I met this young man in August of this year. He happens to be in attorney as well, happens to be likewise a graduate of Loyola University of New Orleans, and as we're putting in plugs for everybody in their backyard, I would put in a plug for Loyola University. Sat down with him and talked to him about Northwestern, about our future, where we wanted to go with it. I knew how important it was to make sure that we had the appropriate staff to move this university forward and to bring it to the prominence that it deserves. He's been with Northwestern. He's been with Northwestern for 16 years. I had to check his ID because he's awfully young. I guess he started school at Northwestern and when he was 12 years old. I don't even have children that young. But speaking with him and having an opportunity to get to know him, I immediately knew that this was the young man that I wanted to make my Chief of Staff. We are only so good as our supporting staff and this young man is dynamic, powerful, has a lot of institutional knowledge at Northwestern that bridges the gap from when I was there to present. And the first thing I wanted to do was to promote him and have him be my right-hand man, which he is today. Keeps me in line, he's my guardrails and I'm so appreciative of him being here. And on occasion, he makes this old mule look like a thoroughbred and I'm very proud of him and I thank you for that.
President Genovese, Chair Romero, President Gallo, members, thank you so much for the opportunity to serve in this capacity. I've been assigned an arduous task to keep up with President Genovese. He's got a lot of energy, he's got a lot of passion for the work we're doing at Northwestern State University. It's been a great experience thus far. I did order a Cajun-French dictionary that I bring to me with meetings so I can understand what he's saying. Problem is, the words that he's saying are not in the Cajun-French dictionary. We are communicating well and we've got a lot of great opportunities right now at Northwestern State University. We appreciate your support and look forward to working with you if we move forward. Thank you.
Congratulations. In closing, when I wanted him to hold his ground, he wasn't listening very carefully and I said, hey boy, lash palapata, okay? And then that's when he ordered on Amazon the Cajun dictionary.
Is Dr. Wainwright still here, Southeastern?
I think he was trying to make a meeting in New Orleans.
Okay. All right. Dr. Savva?
Thank you Chair Davidson for the opportunity to introduce some new people to you. You know, it's unusual that you have high turnover at the dean's level position, but through essentially just retirements over the last three years, we had three positions opened up, but, and we were very lucky to get some magnificent candidates to accept those positions. The first one, Dr. Lisa Brusard on the end here, you approved her last month, but we didn't have the opportunity to introduce her. I wanted to do that. She's been a nurse educator for 32 years, past 12 years a nursing administrator. She has her undergraduate degree from the university and her master's and doctoral from Military Health Sciences Center. She served as Department Head of Nursing for seven years and Associate Dean of Nursing and Health Sciences for four years, so she's well-prepared for this position. She's currently Chair of the Louisiana Council of Administrators and Nursing Education. She's recognized in 2019 by the Louisiana State Nursing Association as a fellow. In 2014, the American Association of Colleges Nursing Leadership and Academic Nursing Program, she was named a fellow. She is a member of the Louisiana Organization of Nurse Leaders, active member of the Louisiana State Nurses Association. She serves at South Louisiana Community College as RN Advisory Board, as well as Ossinger Lafayette General Nurse Residency Advisory Committee. So Dr. Lisa Brusard, go first.
Thank you, Dr. Romero, as well as President Gallo and all the board, of course, and special thanks to Dr. Savva and Dr. Abear for giving me the outstanding opportunity to serve as the dean of our college. As he said, I've been at UL as long as, as long as can be and I'm a raging Cajun to the core and my passion is nursing education. It's a very exciting time for our college as we work through the growth of our health sciences campus, lots of exciting things going there, going on there, as well as growth of our programs within our college. So it truly is an honor to be able to serve as the dean and I appreciate it. I also want to recognize my husband, Chris, who's here with me today and I certainly wouldn't be here without his support, so thank you.
Dr. Savva, is it true that the dean is also a graduate of the UL Systems Leadership Program?
Absolutely. Yes, so you can ask for work. It's all good, my classmates, Jessica, my partner in crime, yes. Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you for creating that disruption for me, Dr. Clark. I have others. I'm gonna have internal bickering all day now, best class. Next is Dr. Annie Kokobobo, which is a common Cajun name. Dr. Kokobobo is the dean of the College of Liberal Arts and Professor of Modern Languages here at the university. Prior to beginning this role in August, she was a professor of Russian Studies and Chair of Slavic, German, and Eurasian Studies at the University of Kansas. She received her BA from Dartmouth and her PhD from Columbia. At the University of Kansas, she served as University Senate President. She was also an active researcher, bringing in significant research dollars, has also written or is currently writing four books and over 30 articles on Russian and Balkan literature and culture. Her public writings have appeared in Time Magazine, Chronicle of Higher Education, and Washington Post, and she's a delightful personality and a great addition to our College of Liberal Arts and Professor of Modern Languages here at the university, Dr. Kokobobo.
Thank you, Dr. Savva. Thank you, President Gallo, and thank you Chair Romero. I'm really excited to be here. This is, it's been two and a half months. It's been a whirlwind. It's been incredibly exciting and I also want to thank the board for approving my appointment. I wasn't sure if we were still going to do this when that happened, so then I realized. But it's been incredibly, I'm really grateful to get to know our faculty and our different departments. My college is, really lives and breathes the mission of public education. I've been a public educator myself for many years and we're growing and I think a lot of the soft skills that we provide our students are really important for career readiness and we'll keep on making that case. And that's a big part of my vision as I'm coming here, but it's been, it's been a privilege to get to know and to meet some of you yesterday, but to get to know our faculty, our leadership here and I'm really grateful and I'm excited to be here.
Dr. Kokobobo is also fluent in multiple languages. I asked her to give a sentence in each of the five or six languages, but she refused to do so. Final introduction is Dr. Tracy Cross, who serves as our Dean of the College of Education and Human Development at the university. Prior to that, for 15 years, he held endowed chair, was a professor of psychology and gifted education, and Executive Director of the Center for Gifted Education and the Institute on the Suicide of Gifted Students at William &amp; Merritt. He also, before that, serves as distinguished professor of psychology of gifted studies at Ball State University. He's published more than 300 articles, book chapters, and columns. He's made more than 400 presentations at conferences and has published 14 books. He received the distinguished service award from the Association for Gifted, the National Association of Gifted Children, where he was an early leader, early scholar, and distinguished scholar award. Was given six Mensa Awards for Outstanding Research. In 2009, he received the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Mensa Education Research Foundation. Recently, he was named as a legacy in the field of gifted education by the National Association of Gifted Children. He's edited eight journals. He's spent two stints as a Fulbright Scholar and he was identified as the most productive researcher in the field of gifted education over a 60-year period of time, and he's only 48 years old. Let me introduce Dr. Tracy Cross. Tracy?
Well, I want to thank everyone for affording me this position. It's really special to have these kinds of opportunities after you've been around just a little bit. I want to mention that my initiation into Louisiana occurred 38 years ago when I was a faculty member at Tech. I had two very wonderful years there and I promised my wife one day we'd come back to Louisiana, from Tennessee originally and from Virginia most recently. After making a loop around the United States and my kids growing up and now two grandchildren, this opportunity came. And UL is a very special place for a lot of reasons. And one of them I want to put a pin in today is to encourage all of you, if you want to come visit what I believe to be the best laboratory school that exists in these United States, come see what's going on here. It's really quite special, special enough that I wanted to come here and participate. Now, if my father were here, he'd say, as a UT fan, Tennessee fan, you really go to great lengths to see good quality football. Yes, it's true. I watch this team with great appreciation. UL is a great place to work and the college I represent is chock full of wonderful, wonderful colleagues. So it's an honor to be here and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have any other business before the Personnel Committee? If not, that concludes Personnel.
Thank you Chair Davidson. At this time, I'd like to proceed with President Gallo's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members, in your manila folders, we've placed the 2025 calendar of meetings as well as an updated contact sheet for board members and a list of standing committee appointments. Please keep those handy for your reference. If you recall, recently, we discussed the partnership that we entered into with K-16 Solutions and I'd asked that Dr. Norris and Dr. Hoover come up and give us an update. They both just returned from San Antonio presenting at EduCalls and the K-16 partnership is the first, we're the first system in the country to enter into such a partnership. So I turn it over to them for an update on that project.
Thank you, President Gallo. You know, we started this work about six months ago, under the leadership of President Gallo and Vision, really. Quite frankly, he said he wanted our data infrastructure to move forward and so we started having conversations with our partner, K-16 Solutions, and we're really excited about what's ahead. As President Gallo said, we just got back from EduCalls. I would say there were a lot of data geeks there, so we were happy and right at home. And, but this work was picked up in Yahoo Finance as well as NASH came to us and said, look, what you guys are doing is transformational and you're leading in the nation. So we're excited about that. Really big thanks to the Board of Regents who also is supportive of this project. And so, next slide please. So, you know, I'm coming to you with some of the challenges that we faced as a system and our institutions face as well, but we are excited to say that these challenges will be addressed by our Data X solution. Some of the challenges that you've heard again and again is it's hard to get real-time data, automation, we're lacking in automation. We can use our data now to unlock dollars in our funding formula and, you know, the data gathering, we work in silos pretty often and we're pulling from multiple systems and we have multiple folks that we are asked to submit data to us. And so this brings us to a place where we really will have one source of truth and so we're really excited about that. We'll have this unified sort of model where data will come to our institutions faster, quicker, more accurately. We can tell our story better, which is very important during these times. And so I'm going to ask that we go to the next slide and pass it to Dr. Hoover to talk a little bit about how we got here, but I will say this. You know, we started off with sort of a pilot and we identified three institutions. I'll tell you, we met with our presidents and they experienced what the Gen Z generation calls FOMO. So some of those who weren't included in the pilot have a little bit of fear of missing out, but we have Tech, Grambling, and ULM who are our pilot institutions. We're excited about that for several reasons. If you notice here, we have Tech, Research Institution, we have Grambling, HBCU, and we have ULM, which is one of our regional institutions. So we know if we can knock it out the park with these institutions, we know it'll work for our system. And so I'll pass it to Dr. Hoover to talk a little bit more about the technical aspect of it.
Thank you, Claire. And I want to also thank the presidents at those three institutions for cooperating in your IT stuff. It's been wonderful, so thank you very much for that. So you can go to the next slide. So here's just kind of a breakdown of the systems that are actually flowing. So we've got campus from Tech, we've got Banner from ULM and from Grambling. Workday, Slate is a Tech. We'll also be adding Recruit CRM, which is Banner's CRM tool at ULM, and then we'll be doing Admissions Pro at, that is the one that's used at Grambling, and then we will add Slate when they migrate to Slate at Grambling. And then also ChatTP0 will be used. So it goes into the scaffolding, which is basically that data is flowing into Data X. That'll be then, we'll be able to access it not only on the campuses, but also through the Board of Regents here, obviously through the UL system. And then eventually it'll flow up to the Board of Regents. So again, giving state-of-the-art, real-time data, as far as two or three times a day, but real-time data at your hands and at the Board of Regents, which is, as I see Dr. Clark with his shaking, said, this is incredibly powerful. It's going to give you all the data that you need to advocate for us, for the system, to the state and to the legislature. We have never been able to, this clerk can attest, she's never been able to have this kind of real-time data and the right data that's going to get us to really be able to make, I mean, in the past, you know, data-informed decisions have always been a tagline and we've got the data, but no, actually this is allowing us to give real-time data decisions and be able to move these institutions, not institutions forward, but also the system and ultimately the state forward. Dr. Clark?
How soon will we get past the pilot and into an entire system?
So the first step is we are looking at least until May. What we'd like to do is make sure that our pilot is sound, data is flowing, we are happy with our dashboards that are being created. You know, a big piece to this is ensuring that the folks who are a part of this project are happy with our definitions. We've got to go through that approval process and so on, but we won't be seeing us moving past the pilot until at least after May, as long as we stay on our timeline.
Thank you both and everybody else involved in this project. This is truly transformational and I think, you know, well overdue and I'm glad to see that the system is really being a national leader on this.
I'll tell you, the nice thing about these three institutions, not only the easy driving distance for me, but selfish reasons, they are 95% of the systems that are eventually going to go in here, of the six hundred schools, of the six other schools are there. So as far as once we set up these systems here, we're just cookie cutter adding to the other institutions, so it won't take us as long to get those other institutions going, once we get, after your assistance, once we get the approval for funding and whatnot.
And Dr. Hoover and I would be remiss if we didn't thank Dr. Sandra Green, who's been serving on this project with us, and Ann McKissin, who's also been instrumental in helping us keeping the project on task and moving forward. So, thank you guys.
And I'd also add that as I've gone before, the, both the House Education Committee and Appropriations Committees over the last couple of weeks, we've shared with them the importance of us innovating and continuing to find ways to be more efficient in what we do. And obviously, we make better decisions when we have good reliable data to make those decisions. And so that certainly, I think, went over well with our legislative members and they were all really excited to hear about us leading in this way. Thank you, Dr. Norris and Dr. Hoover, for your work. Let's see, next, I'd like to invite Dr. Calle to come and give us a brief update on Title IX.
Thank you, President Gallo, and good afternoon. Just a couple of things about student affairs-related matters. I would like to provide a brief update on our progress with Title IX and power-based violence initiatives as we approach the submission of our semi-annual comprehensive report due to you by November 7th. We're actively compiling data on incidents of power-based violence and Title IX incidents across our institutions. This report is part of the state's efforts to address issues related to sexual assault, domestic violence... domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking within college campuses. A copy of the report will be sent to you in the coming weeks. Our campuses continue to implement responsible employee training for all staff members. This training is crucial in equipping employees with the knowledge and skills to respond appropriately to disclosures of harassment or violence, ensuring supportive measures for our students. Next week, we will be back here, Dr. Savoie, on your campus for our Title IX training, and so we appreciate, of course, all of our Title IX coordinators, but I want to highlight one of our Title IX coordinators, Ms. Teresa Lade. She has done a lot in the Title IX space for the system, and so she has been instrumental in putting together this training for our student support roles, law enforcement, advocates, advisors, and student affairs practitioners. So, we will be here on next Monday and Tuesday. If you don't have anything to do, you're welcome to join us. Just let me know. So, this training will focus on best practices for handling Title IX and power-based violence incidents and enhancing our collaborative efforts in supporting affected individuals. Another item I want to bring to your attention is something that transpired a few weeks ago. The Board of Regents has granted, has awarded funds to the University of Louisiana at Lafayette and Northwestern State University for collegiate recovery programs. As you know, our students are only as successful as the support we provide for them. So, of course, I'm excited to announce this award to those two universities. We do have a university currently taking the lead on collegiate recovery program, that is Southeastern University in Hammond, Louisiana, and so they have created a really good structure for CRPs, collegiate recovery programs, and they were actually the first one in the state of Louisiana to have such a program. Collegiate recovery programs provide a safe, supportive space for students in recovery from substance use disorders. These programs do more than just offer a place to study. They create a community where students can receive peer support, academic resources, and the opportunity to grow and thrive, both personally and professionally and academically. With this funding, Northwestern and UL Lafayette will be able to build spaces for their students that will have a lasting impact by helping students maintain their sobriety while participating fully in college life. So, thank you for this opportunity to share. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Calais, for all of your work in that area. I want to do a couple of reminders. Next year's, for our future conference, is scheduled for March twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth in Baton Rouge, and so please make a note of that date, and we would certainly like to encourage full participation of our board supervisors at our event in March. The University of New Orleans recently announced the inaugural class of the Educational Administration Programs Distinguished Alumni Class. This prestigious award is given to an educational administration graduate who has distinguished him or herself in the field to reflect honor upon the program, provide service to the communities, and are recognized for outstanding accomplishments and are a credit to the University of New Orleans. This year, our very own Dr. Janine O'Rourke was named or awarded this prestigious award. The celebration will take place Friday, March twenty-first, at the Homer L. Hitt Alumni Center, and I thought it was important to make sure that we recognized Dr. O'Rourke, and let's please give her a round of applause. We had quite a busy birthday month around the system office. This month, we have celebrated birthdays by Ann McKissin, Keisha Neal, our very own chairman, Mark Romero, Sandra Green, Alyssa Coates, and today, celebrating her birthday and spending it with us is none other than Carol Slack. Carol, happy birthday. Happy birthday, Carol. One last item, Mr. Chairman. Members, you were emailed campus personnel actions for review. Staff has reviewed all of the requests and recommends approval. Mr. Chairman, we need a motion and second to adopt these personnel changes.
Supervisor Kettaw for motion and a second. Offered by Supervisor Basada, second by Supervisor Salter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was great to see many of you complete your ethics training this morning, and I want to thank Bruce for facilitating this morning's meeting, as well as Greg Thibodeau for presenting. Just a reminder that you complete by year end, any remaining coursework you need to do so far, your service on this board. There are a few things I want to visit on before we depart, and I think there are certainly really great opportunities, good information to share, and I've been working with President Gallo and with Dr. O'Rourke in building out a healthcare work group. I think it's a vital and essential part of supporting the citizens of Louisiana and assuring good delivery of healthcare services, and we find, and Janine's service on the Health Works Committee certainly shows that there's a significant deficiency in the number of nurses and other healthcare providers in the allied health world. It's imperative that we prioritize and do everything we possibly can to serve our role and improve and advance the number of graduates that can serve the needs of the state. We've made significant progress, but, you know, progress remains to be made in order for us to deliver. Understanding this, our system must focus on optimizing success and bringing dedicated and well-trained graduates to the healthcare system. As a result, I've established a work group charged with identifying innovative ways in which our institutions can address health professional shortage areas. This group is composed of healthcare leaders, including our UL System Board members, and I want to thank both Dr. Leatherman and Dr. Noble for serving on the committee. I believe we're gonna see some really good things come from you, and I look forward to hearing back on this. I think it's certainly well overdue. It's comprised of faculty, university administrators, and other key stakeholders. I think we'll see this group explore and define ways in which our member institutions can strengthen the healthcare talent pipeline, whether it be through advancing our enrollment strategies in this area, or collaborating to ensure that we maximize our completion levels. I'm grateful to all of you for agreeing to serve, and I think in time, as the work unfolds, we'll provide you with updates. Couple of other items I want to touch on. Earlier this month, Governor Landry issued an executive order of policy on free expression. I'm certainly pleased to see that we were very proactive in bringing to you today a policy revision that was presented by Academic Affairs, and I think that, you know, Dr. Gallo's leadership, the work of his staff, and others who contributed to building this, it brings some, certainly, I think, alignment and forward-thinking plan for us to address this particular requirement. Another area that I believe that's very important, and we've worked on beginning in 2007, is in the area of diversity, and I would offer, you know, that respective to our staff, as well as our students. You know, we formally committed to recruiting and developing high-quality administrators, faculty, and staff from all demographics, experiential, and cultural backgrounds in both admissions and employment. Merit has always been our guiding light as a central criterion for decision-making for our nine member institutions. As respect students, our universities use objective admission criteria based on high school GPA, grades in core curriculum, and standardized test scores. No public university in Louisiana is at a level of selectivity that results in zero-sum admissions, where the admissions of one student eliminates a slot for another. Here, with few limited exceptions, if you meet the objective criteria, you're admitted as a student in one of our institutions. University of Louisiana system member institutions have among the most diverse student populations in the nation, and that diversity is a product of merit-based approach. As a result, our students graduate better prepared to live and compete in a global economy. In short, our students, regardless of background, belong on our campuses. Our purpose is clear. Increasing the educational level of all Louisianians is essential to the economic vitality and quality of life in this state. The intentionality of our work clearly fulfills a compelling state interest for Louisiana and other communities. I would also like to say that our board has always been very thoughtful, thorough, and deliberate, and our work stands the test of time. We're not shooting from the hip. We're addressing items with a thorough thought process, and we're making good moves to assure that we're bringing equity and certainly recognizing the needs of our students. I believe the leadership of this state wants that. I believe our work is well-aligned with the wishes of our legislature, with our students, and certainly with our leadership at a state level. President Gallo is gonna update us on efforts that are ongoing as prescribed by Act 641.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. During the legislative session, legislation was filed by Representative Schenevere, addressing diversity, equity, and inclusion. As a result of collaboration with her, with the Board of Regents, with all the higher ed leaders, legislation was passed. We are currently in the process of obtaining data from all of our campuses that is due to be submitted to the Board of Regents by December thirty-first. We feel very confident that we will have our data submitted well in advance of the deadline, and upon that submission to Regents, it will then be forwarded to the legislature, and we will continue our conversations with them as we approach the legislative session in the spring of 2025. And so, we are on track, Mr. Chairman, to comply with that work pursuant to that legislation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any comment or discussion from any board members? Any comments before we move to conclude? I'd once again like to thank you, Dr. Savoie, for hosting us. It's been a great time here. I believe it's a pretty awesome expression of a great institution that's founded on a great leadership and with really supportive and extraordinary team of leaders throughout the different departments. Any board member or system staff who have time to stay for a brief tour of the campus after lunch, Dr. Savoie is inviting you to join him as a tour on the bus, and certainly hope you all can join him. There's no other business before this board may have a motion to adjourn. Supervisor Brown, second by Supervisor Salter. We stand adjourned. Thank you.